All right. I will call the February 23rd Board of Education meeting to order. We'll begin with the Pledge of Allegiance.
The United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, I'll ask everyone to remember to please silence your cell phones. We're gonna begin with a statement from Rob Summer, who's gonna make his statement remotely using a computer.
I would be sorry to the meeting tonight to deliver this apology. However, I am quarantining due to direct exposure to immediate family members who have tested positive, including my mother who is hospitalized, and I am awaiting test results. In accordance with our screening protocol and for everyone's safety, I am at home rather than present at the meeting. I want to again take this opportunity to apologize to all those who were present and all who watched the meeting of February 9th, 2021. Although my intention was to maintain control of the meeting, I lost control of myself and thereby the meeting. I have had many sleepless nights since then filled with regret over my condom, reflecting on how I acted and mishandled myself and the situation. I made no excuses or for no defense and accept full responsibility for my actions. I should not have yelled back at members of the community who were there merely to express their concerns to the board and the administration on an emotional issue. My response and words were unacceptable. I am aware of the haunt that my condom that night has done to my relationship and that of the board, to members of the community. While some may never be able to accept my apology, I assure you all my apology is fond though, and I view this as my teachable moment. I am committed to do better. I would hope that my 12 years as a dedicated diligent volunteer, including two prior seasons as president, would demonstrate that my actions at night were aberration and would afford me an opportunity of redemption and to overcome. I appreciate the emails of support I have received in the past two weeks of people who understand that all I have ever wanted and worked hard to achieve is the best possible, best education possible for all the children of Eastchester. I understand that my response that night did not reflect that, and I will try to earn back the trust of this community that I have lived in for 25 years, raised my children, and gave them what's so deeply. Thank you and again, I sincerely apologize.
Okay, thank you, Rob. Rob? So, before we get on with the regular agenda, on behalf of the board of, of the entire Board of Education, I wanted to take a few minutes to try and help everyone understand how the school board is expected to operate. Like you, each of us is a member of the Eastchester community. We live here, we pay taxes, and our children attend or have attended school here. Like you, we're passionate about advocating for our children, so much so that we volunteer to serve on the school board. Once elected, our duties extend to all the stakeholders in our school district. That includes, of course, the 3,200 or so students, but it also includes the families, the staff, the administrators, and even residents and taxpayers who don't have children in the schools. As school board trustees, our responsibility is to the Eastchester community at large. As a board, we oversee the district by setting policy and approving actions that we believe will make our district the best, taking into consideration the various and sometimes conflicting priorities of community members, available resources, legislative requirements, fiduciary implications, and other potential benefits and consequences. Unfortunately, we can't please all the people all the time. That frustrates us. We want every member of our community to be happy with our school, with our district, with the choices we make, and with us. It's human nature. But it would be irresponsible of us to hastily change our instruction model without properly analyzing all of the consequences of the change, regardless of what other districts may say or do. First, it's not always best. Later this evening, our administrators will present to this board their plans to get us more in-person schooling. We hope to learn about what in-person school will look like for our students and families, what challenges will still need to be overcome before we get there, and what consequences may be expected as we move forward. As a board, we're responsible for evaluating all the risks and challenges associated with this change and ensuring that our entire student body and their families are protected fairly and equitably. In addition to the risk to student and faculty mental and physical health, we also need to ensure funding won't be restricted, resources won't be depleted, and that we're not simply trading the emotional well-being of one group of families for another by giving more school days to some kids at the expense of others who may be forced to lose the two school days that they have now. This is what we're committed to doing, and this is a large portion of the business we'll be conducting during tonight's school board meeting. As a school board, we're a public body. The specific manner in which business is conducted during our board meetings is outlined primarily by Title II of New York State Education Law and by board policies in Section 2000, School Board Governance Operations. You can find them on the website. Our board meetings are run according to parliamentary procedure and are presided over by the school board president. By law, our votes and deliberations are public record, and as such, you are entitled to observe our meetings. However, the law does not obligate the board to allow the public to participate because we want to hear from you. The board enacted Board Policy Number 1230, setting aside time for public comment. This policy states that the public comment period is limited to 30 minutes, and each individual speaker is limited to three minutes. That means that if every speaker uses the fully allotted time, we may only be able to hear from 10 people. It makes no accommodations for attendees to address the board outside the public comment period, nor for spectators to cheer or jeer. We generally read the highlights of the policy at the beginning of our board meetings to remind community members about these rules. During the past few meetings, some individuals spoke for longer than three minutes. On both January 23rd and again on February 9th, speakers who continued for six minutes were asked to wrap up by the board presidents, who are responsible for enforcing the rule and order of the meeting. Regrettably, on February 9th, this led to exchanges of escalated disruption and defiance, and Board President Rob Summer was unable to maintain control of the meeting and lost his temper. This board has reviewed the video of that meeting. We agree that Mr. Summer's response was inappropriate for a public forum, even if it was in response to audience provocation and concern that remaining speakers be heard. Mr. Summer has expressed his regrets to the members of this, members of this board and to the community as a whole. We accept his apology. We hope that you can as well. Rob has been a valuable, passionate member of this board for 12 years and has served as its president twice before. He has contributed to this board and the district and the district in ways that much of the public may never realize. He is as committed to this community as any of us, as any of you. We stand behind him as our president and are confident that he continues to value civil discourse and community input on the issues affecting the Eastchester School District, as do all of us. To further civil discourse, beginning tonight during public comment, we're going to share a timer on the screen that will count down the three minutes for each speaker, and it will turn red when you exceed your time. We hope that in the spirit of community fairness and consideration, each of you will act responsibly and limit your comments to three minutes. Remember that when you go over three minutes, you're taking time away from your neighbors who also want to comment. We're not looking to shut you down. We get that in the moment it can be difficult to keep to a timeline. But if you excessively overrun, we will interrupt you and ask you to wrap up. And if you become defiant or disruptive, we will have you removed. We recognize that the topics that are being discussed discuss strong emotion and passion from members of our community and that we want to be heard. Hopefully, after tonight's presentation by the administration to the board, it will be clear that we're trying our best to hear you, even if we may not be able to give each of you exactly what you want, when you want it. And we realize that it may seem confusing or even unfair that our regular board meetings are open for public observation, but not dialogue like our hearings, forums, and coffee and conversation sessions that have and will continue to take place. We encourage each of you to participate in those discussions, especially if you did not get a chance to be heard during one of our meetings. But we trust and request that you respect our rules and our right to conduct school business during our board meetings without disruption and to pursue our responsibility to serve the entire community equitably. On behalf of the entire, entire Eastchester Board of Education, I thank you. And now let's move on to our regularly scheduled February 23rd board meeting agenda. Uh, so we will go right to the high school student reports. Do we have to add you to the panel?
Yeah, I just raised my hand.
There it is. You should come up when you start speaking.
Good evening, everyone. We hope you're all staying healthy and safe and had a relax in February break. We're excited to update you on what's going on in the high school. The Model Commerce Team had a very successful February home conference and gave awards to the top six debaters who attended. They had a meeting today finalizing their bills for the Virtual Columbia Model Commerce Conference on the weekend of March 12th and March 13th. The players club in the high school is back, and they will have their winter comedy this weekend. 10 students will be putting on each of their own comedies, which will be streamed online. Tickets to their show are free, and everyone is encouraged to watch on Friday, Saturday, and Sunday at 7:00 PM. EGO is hosting their annual winter February blood drive tomorrow from 10:00 AM to 7:00 PM at the American Legion Hall, right down the road from Eastchester High School. The organization was able to secure 78 donors to donate blood to the American Red Cross to be used during these dire times. EGO is also meeting with Waverly students this Friday morning for their annual Read Aloud Day, in which student government officers will read a book chosen by, chosen by the Waverly School to kindergarten and first grade classes via Zoom. It's always a fun experience for Eastchester's youth to see older student role models and ask them questions about their experiences in the high school. Lastly, for EGO, they are developing a plan to hold their annual Rockin's Cancer Concert virtually and adopt the concept of, of the hit show Masked Singer on TV to make the event more intriguing. The Student Athletic Council is going to be running an Eagle Nation merchandising store, starting in March, and offering great deals on stylish clothing for Eastchester's students, parents, faculty, and alumni to purchase, to purchase, to support the Athletic Council as they head into spring. The social media, the Athletic Council's social media officers recently finished their senior highlights posts on Instagram to highlight the fall senior athletes' experiences in Eastchester athletics over the years. A new initiative and one of the most exciting additions to the club this year is the starting of a podcast that the Athletic Council announcers will run and post weekly to update Eastchester residents on the high school's athletics. They will also interview current players and Eastchester alums. More information to follow as the podcast's development continues. Lastly, the Eastchester, the Student Athletic Council is partnering with the Art Honor Society to decorate the gym lobby area and create a mural on the wall across from the locker rooms of images of current athletes and past players, a testament to Eastchester athletics throughout history.
Many of the winter sports are back up and running, which is very exciting news. Cheer, basketball, and swim have started practicing weekly for their upcoming games, meets, and competitions. Today, the swim team will be attending their semifinals, and two of the swimmers on the team will compete to advance to finals. Basketball games have also begun, and the boys varsity team won earlier this week against Harvard. Both the boys and, the girls and boys basketball teams have their senior games where they got to honor the seniors as with their last season. Their cheerleading team is hard at work and looking forward for their first virtual competition on March 7th. Fall two sports are hopeful of starting in the beginning of March in time for their season in the spring. The Row Kappa Honor Society has started preparation for their virtual history trivia nights with the middle school students. They have a different trivia night planned for the sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, eighth graders, and it looks promising to be a successful event. The Math Honor Society is very excited to be having a geometry supply drive starting this week. All students in the high school are encouraged to donate new compasses, rulers, protractors, and other math supplies that will be going to kids locally that are in need of them. The Spanish Club is hosting a meeting tomorrow in which a member of Mexican heritage will be leading a cooking recipe to make Brazilian chocolate truffles. Members are excited to virtually learn how to make this delicious chocolate treat. Before break, the Italian club held a fundraiser in the spirit of Valentine's Day. They are able to sell 75 prepackaged heart-shaped cookies to students and raise money to go towards the club. This was their fun way to get everyone excited for the upcoming break. Lastly, seniors are starting to find their wise internship placements for this year. And although many internships are going to be virtual, they are still excited at the opportunity to explore areas interesting to them through this program. Thank you all and have a nice day.
Excellent. Thank you both. As always, we welcome you to stay as long as you're willing, but we recognize that we have homework and other things you may want to deal with, so we also welcome you to go to the meeting. All right, uh, board committee reports. Any board committee reports? You know, uh, make sure you unmute, please. Mic on, unmute, okay. That's it. All right, just, the only report is that the Finance Committee met this evening prior to this meeting. Uh, we reviewed some preliminary projections on the budget going forward for next year, and obviously, there's a lot of things in flux, and we have a timetable that will have more information forthcoming. And Lisa, if I've said anything incorrectly, please correct me. You know, the state aid is up in the air, the CARES money is up in the air, you know, and Lisa's doing the best she can to project all of this stuff. But, uh, we'll know as we get closer to April, a little more targeting of what, uh, what's going on, so that's it. Thank you. Thank you. Any other committee reports? Excellent. Well then, we'll move on to the superintendent's report. I think we said we're going to do the first part of that, but then we'll just skip the second part until after the conference.
Good evening. Yes, that is correct. There, we have two elements to the superintendent's report this evening. We're going to just focus on one, which is really to talk about the, the road to kind of reopening, bringing students back for more in-person learning. Uh, but to the point of, uh, the committee that just met on finance, Assistant Superintendent Lisa Sanfilippo will, after public comment, you go into some detail around the items that Mr. Capone brought up. So I want to take just a minute, uh, before I launch into and share my screen and talk a little bit about, how we're, how we're moving toward getting more students in for more full-time teaching and learning. I want to just mention that this Thursday, we have an event sponsored by our PTA Advocacy Committee. Uh, it's, it's entitled, "How Do We Return to School and Receive State Funding?" And that, I, that is a Thursday at 7:00 PM. It's a virtual event. Uh, we are delighted that we will have Senator Shelley Mayer there and Assemblywoman Amy Paul also there with us. We're excited about that. We invite you to that event, and our PTA has publicized that. Right now, I need to, uh, get to the correct screen. So I want to talk a little bit about our road to safely returning to in-person learning. As you know, correspondence went out the other night, uh, in which I announced that we are moving to plan for a reopening this spring, sometime in that early April timeframe. And, uh, this comes after careful consideration and study and a number of events that have transpired in just the last three to four weeks. What's happened in the last three or four weeks to motivate this decision is that the landscape has changed. It all started at the very end of January with Governor Cuomo's comments saying that moving to a reopening situation would be a local decision. Uh, prior to, to his comments, uh, very few of us believed or understood that this would, that we would have the power to make that local decision. We had certain beliefs and understandings about the guidelines that were put in place by the State Department of Health that indicated, you know, six feet with masks was a standard that really, uh, didn't have as much wiggle room as it has ultimately turned out that it did have. Uh, and his comments really indicated that, you know, there was more flexibility available than what we had previously understood. And then, right on the heels of those comments, the CDC revised its guidance and has since issued more guidance, uh, indicating that, yes, while six feet is desirable, uh, there, there's also an imperative to try to get more students into school, that students should be in school as much as possible, and that, uh, there are ways to mitigate if you cannot, you know, achieve the six feet, and they, they talked a little bit about that. Similarly, the American Academy of Pediatrics made similar comments, and in fact, seemed a little more emphatic about the, the imperative of the social emotional well-being and the learning effect on children when they're not able to be in school, and really talked about how it was, it was an imperative to try to get them into school. And as all this is going on and we're internalizing it, we are, we have now received some more clarity on more flexibility within the guidelines. We had known all along that there were some school districts in various parts of the region, particularly in Nassau County, who had been, all along, um, had taken a more, what I would call a little bit more liberal interpretation of the guidelines. You know, you're looking at the ability to, to have students at, say, three to six feet with barriers and with masks. Uh, and so they had been functioning like that for some time, and there, there were not a lot of districts functioning like that, but there were some. And they were not in Westchester County particularly or the lower Hudson area. But as we dug in a little bit, um, you know, following these comments from the governor and the CDC and the American Academy of Pediatrics, we started asking more questions of whose guidelines are we really following? Because the guideline language is not always crystal clear. And the more we prained and the more we, uh, you know, heard, heard from parents also saying, hey, we should, you know, you should take advantage of the flexibility that's in, in this language. We realized, yeah, the flexibility might be in that language, but the, there's also a spirit and an intent of the entire, and they're really kind of asking for six feet. And what we learned as we went along was that there's, there, the State Department of Health, New York State Department of Health, it is their guidelines that are what they are. They're not going to be clarified. They're not going to change. The flexibility does exist. Um, and yet, everybody would want to have, you know, six feet whenever they could get it. But you have to weigh that, and the flexibility exists, when you weigh it against what is the current state of learning and your students and the social emotional, you know, toll on the system. So, we had some more clarity on that guideline flexibility that we didn't have previously. And we realized that the interpretation that we had all been taking in this region did afford more flexibility than we were originally ascribing to it. Also want to point out a meta-analysis that I can put up, that I can, I've shared with our task force, that I can put it on the website and share it with anyone, but it was a meta-analysis of 172 research articles out of 17 different countries. It really talked about a one meter distance being crucial. That if you can get one meter of distance, that is like a crucial marker in terms of health and safety. For every additional meter that you add onto that, you become more effective. But that, that is a minimum threshold for real effectiveness, was one meter, and that is, uh, very clearly in that research. So then we started to look, as part of the task force analysis, at other districts, primarily the ones in Nassau County that I referenced. We started making phone calls. We started asking them what they were doing. We started talking more to them about their results. We went on the dashboard and we looked at their results. And what we found is if you, based on the publicly available data, if you look at their, for lack of a better term, infection rates, like the ratio of the number of cases per the number of students, and you compared that to the districts in Westchester, you didn't see an appreciable difference. And so even though they were, you know, using, uh, some, some of the flexibility, whereas many of the districts in this area were not, you weren't seeing, you know, spikes in cases. You weren't seeing off the charts changes. You were seeing very similar percentages across the board. And then a couple other things that are, are really ought to be overlooked. We have now the availability of vaccines. And thank heaven that educators, those who work in school systems, are in that 1A category, and many have been vaccinated and continue to be vaccinated. It is not always been easy, but we're finding a pretty high percentage of our staff are on the road to being vaccinated, vaccinated, are in that process now, and have had some success finding those vaccines. And then we have this other thing that is available to us now that we didn't have previously, and that is surveillance testing. Surveillance testing is the notion that you're monitoring the infection rate through random testing of a certain percentage on a regular interval throughout your, your operation. And you can tell, okay, if the infection rate in a town or a county is, let's say, five or six percent, you can start to measure what is your infection rate inside the school. We, we have some idea based on the number of cases that we've identified. And we know that our infection rates and nationally infection rates in schools are much, much lower than they are outside. But to be able to actually, you know, test for yourself on a random basis and monitor that on a weekly basis, you then have the ability to know if these changes in your protocols, if reducing the, if, if increasing the density a little bit is, is changing the situation inside the schools, you have the ability to catch that and know that in real time. The surveillance testing comes to us, uh, free of charge. These are Bynax tests that are rapid tests. They're not as accurate as a PCR test that goes out to a lab, but they're, they're accurate enough to give you a pretty good idea. I think they're eighty-some percent accurate. Uh, and they're available to us at no cost, and they can be administered by our own personnel or trained, our nursing staff. We're also seeing a drop in infection rates. We're seeing that happen now in the region, and that's, that's very encouraging. We hope that that continues, and we know that this is truly a societal effort. Everyone's got to do their part in order to see those rates continue to drop. We know that the infections are coming into the schools from outside. We know that thus far, our protocols, they're not, we're not seeing cases of those who are quarantined in schools. Those infections continuing to spread to our schools. So we know what we've been doing has been working. Certainly, I understand that some people have the question, well, if you change that, will it continue to work? And hence the surveillance testing. But you want to be able to know that if you're ready to change any of those distances per the guidelines, that you are stable and maintaining health and safety. And then we just have, you know, our experience, one of the things that we have learned, we've heard from some in our community, and we've observed that as we've now lived in a hybrid and fully remote model for a period of time, we are finding that there are some students who are doing very well with it, thriving in it, doing very well, and there are some who are struggling with it. And it certainly is not the kind of teaching and learning that we would create unless we had to under these circumstances. So there are compromises that we are living with. There are impacts that we see to our students. And in our, and in our experience, and in my experience, and in my judgment, I'm seeing, as I've described many times, this as a scale. And you have all the health concerns that you can look at in isolation on one side, and you have the learning impacts and the social emotional impacts on the other. And unfortunately, we're not living in a world where it's clean and easy to make a clear decision that it's one or the other. It has to be both. We have to look after the health and safety. We have to look after the learning and the social emotional. And we have to ask ourselves, do we still have the right balance? And that, in my assessment now, is different with the knowledge and what we have seen that I just described than it was early on in this crisis when we didn't know as much, that we didn't have the benefit of experience and history and some data. And I think this is a time for us to make this shift. So here are some of the foundational plan elements. Since we've recently just made this directional shift, we now need to, I'm going to ask everybody that everything I'm sharing with you today is subject to some working out. Like, we aren't gonna, we aren't gonna be able to tell you everything tonight and then just have to be able to stand by it. That just wouldn't be reasonable, right? But I think I can tell you enough, and I'm gonna try within the next couple of days, after working intensively with our amazing staff, try to give you a clear picture of basically what you can expect. And I'm gonna start that a little bit tonight. So this would be a phased-in plan for in-person instruction. We may not do it all at one time. We may start with a couple of grades at the elementary and move our way up. We might start with all the elementary grades and move our way up. But the idea is that we would phase and we would start with the youngest grades. We would use, instead of a standard of six feet and masks, we would apply a standard of six feet or possibly less, three to six feet. we would apply a standard of six feet or possibly less, three to six feet, where necessary, with barriers, usually a three-sided desk shield on a desk, right? And a mask. And we also have the ability to have face shields where necessary for an additional layer of protection. We'd have those on hand. So we're looking at three to six feet, three-sided desk shields, face cover. We would maintain a remote option as we currently have. In our elementary schools, you know, we have dedicated teachers who teach fully remote classes. In our secondary level, all of our teachers stream all of the time, and students don't like to stay home if they want to be fully remote and get their instruction online, and on Wednesdays, check in. That's their time to have some real, you know, interaction with their teacher, who is teaching both cohorts at the same time. So, our elementary configuration, I want to let everybody know that in doing this, until we know who wants to do what, until we have the ability to describe to you a plan, and then have you react to the plan and say, based on what I think I'm getting into, I either want to be fully remote or I want to be fully in, we need to have people make those decisions. And when you make those decisions, if the proportion of students remains similar to what it is now, it's likely we won't have any changes, right? We would, classes would be pretty stable. We would move forward. But it is possible that we could have some movement, and if we have that movement, it may be extremely inefficient, and we may have to reconfigure some classes at the elementary level, where we have to move a teacher from fully remote in or out of it. We have to combine some classes, you know, to make another class. We may have to move teachers. And I know that's incredibly disruptive, but that's what goes with this kind of a change. Hopefully, we don't have many of those disruptions. So what we would be looking at is essentially applying those measures that I described, three to six feet with barriers and desk shields, to bring everybody back to a classroom which density is similar to what it was pre-COVID. Eighteen, nineteen, twenty, twenty-one, hopefully, that size. And when you do that, and you strip out all the extraneous furniture, and you try to provide the teacher with a six-foot, you know, area to be in, right? If possible, and you work that all out, you end up with, it depends on the size of the classroom, but you're going to end up, we can show pictures down the line. We can model some of this out. You might be three feet person to person. That would be as close as you are. You might be four or five feet. You might be closer to six. It just depends. The secondary configuration would carry on similarly to what it is. When we do a fully remote, as I've described, if a student has whatever classes they have, it's all streamed, and that's how they get their instruction. So, I would envision this moving along in a very similar fashion to what it looks like now, with streaming continuing and continuing to have, but you would have the opportunity to increase the density on Monday, Tuesday, Thursday, Friday at least, to have all of your students in at that time, instead of one cohort or the other. And so, we're looking at some of these details about how this would look. We need to work with our staff to get that right, but that's the concept. It would be out there anyway. And we just have to make sure that those who are remote have access to some quality interaction, because they will not be setting foot inside the school. And they've got to have some quality interaction with their teachers if they have questions. And our teachers have to be able to still deliver to these two cohorts. So we have to think that through. But it would certainly, you know, bring everybody back at a much, at least four days a week, and it would be a significant improvement in in-person learning time. We have to make sure that our staff is vaccinated, that everyone who wants a vaccine can get one. We're working on that, and there was an executive order just issued today that we are going to be complying with, which will require people to, us to know how many, what is the percentage of those vaccinated. And then, we will be applying a surveillance rapid testing program in-house. Right now, we are targeting five percent per week. So five percent of our students, five percent of our staff, tested once a week, every week randomly. They will have to give consent. We will have to ask you for consent to do that. And we will hope that parents will, because the more broad pool we get, the more accurate we get. We'll be able to then compare that week to week, and we'll have twenty percent per month, and we'll be able to know how we're doing in terms of safety. We have additional considerations. We do not have all of this worked out. This is what we will be doing over the next week or two. Lunch and lunch service. In an elementary classroom, if you are, we're hoping that we'll be able to find a way to use other spaces to take some of the students, maybe up to half of them, out to another place to have lunch, so that when you are unmasked and you're eating, you have a good six feet between. We have to acknowledge the logistics of our buildings. Our buildings are crowded, especially our elementary buildings. And some of our elementary buildings are crowded. So it's a logistical issue to try to find enough space to do this, but we are working on that. If we are not able to do that, you know, and we're looking at everything from, you know, tents outdoors, but those have to be permitted. Beyond four hundred square feet, they have to actually go through a permitting process. We're looking at, you know, using other, and everything we do has a cost. If you're going to use a gymnasium, you probably can't use that gymnasium very readily for phys ed. And you have to weigh, okay, do I want my kindergarten, first grade, second grader to have phys ed indoors? Or can I do that outdoors? And what about in front of that weather day? How does that weigh out against having an extra couple of feet between them when they're unmasked behind their shield? What's that safety trade-off versus that activity trade-off? That's got to be worked through. It is possible that they may be eating lunch. If we can't find some other way, at three, four, five, six feet apart, behind a shield, possibly with a face shield, eating in a short period of time, without talking and interacting, as protected as possible, it is not ideal. But these are the kind of things we are going to have to face. There are no good choices here, right? These are like, which is the least undesirable choice? So hallway procedures are another one. You get into the hallway. We need to maintain as much space as we can, so there could be the need for some staggered procedures. Classes may not all, maybe a half a class has to go at a time. It could result in some additional staffing or monitors needed to take one half of the class and then another half of the class go with the teacher, right? These kind of things have to happen. The same applies for lunch and hallway procedures at the secondary level and at the middle school. Lunch in those areas, we hope, in the secondary areas, with some modifications, can maintain the six feet. We're hopeful about that, but we still have to dig into the details. Lunch service, you know, as we told you previously, we've had to discontinue lunch service because we were losing a hundred thousand dollars each semester. We didn't want to lose another hundred thousand dollars in the second semester because we didn't have all of our students here purchasing lunch. And at our elementary levels, we had very few students purchasing lunch. So to change that, what we're doing is revisiting, would we be able to provide some sort of limited grab-and-go lunch option? We can theoretically do that, but the question is, do you want to do that for health and safety reasons and with the reconfiguration of your space? It's possible at the elementary level, we may not want to do that. We were selling so few lunches to begin with. And the spaces where the lunch is served is going to be needed for other things. I'm not sure it would be wise to bring it back. However, at the secondary level, it might be different. We just don't know. But we will keep those things in mind. Arrival and dismissal, probably going to have to be staggered in some of our tighter footprint areas. And that could mean a different start time, a slightly different start time, because we just may not have enough space to do that as we did before, because we have more protocols now. We're taking temperatures and reading apps to see if you've taken the attestation app and all of that. So there could be some of those changes. And if that occurs, it really feeds into the issue of busing. If we have to do different tiers of busing to accommodate different tiers of start times, there could be some increased cost, and there could be some difficulty with personnel trying to get enough drivers, because we are having difficulty getting drivers right now to add to our current number. But we would not look to change those arrival and dismissal times unless it were necessary. Special education and services that are given to students who need them. It is a, it has been a monumental task, and I'm so grateful to our special educators and our special education administration, Dr. Ursula and her team, who have worked to find, to get our special education students, many of them in for four days a week currently, and it has meant the world. I've heard nothing but positives about that effort. But that came at a cost of restructuring and moving classrooms and moving schedules, and now that's going to have to be looked at differently. And so, there will be some impacts to that. It doesn't necessarily mean that we wouldn't serve everyone at the four or five days a week, but it may mean some changes in, we have to have some time to reschedule all of that. We have other considerations that have to do with infection rates and monitoring thresholds. What constitutes a significant spike up? There's no answer for that. The county health department, the state health department, no one can tell us at this point, oh, if your infection rate goes to X, or it goes up by X percent a week, that's a threshold. We cannot find any guidance in that regard. So we'll be having to decide, and I'm sure we will be asked, well, what, when would you consider a danger zone? We'll have to kind of feel our way through that and try to come up with some measures to figure that out. We have been asked about ventilation. Some of the districts who've opened up, who said that they were going to open up, who were early on in doing that, you know, have already had some different air filtration equipment in place, or they have talked about bringing it in. When you look at the research, there's no substitute for fresh air. And that is where we've had our engineers come in. If you go to our website, go to our COVID site, go to the frequently asked questions, the Q and A, we had our engineers walk through all of our buildings and optimize all of our systems and put room thirteen filters in wherever they could, and make sure they open up all the ventilation devices. And that said, we still have some classrooms where they're freezing right now, because they must use, and opening up a window is highly effective in terms of, you know, COVID, mitigating COVID. However, it's cold. So at the time we're getting ready to do this, we anticipate it being warmer, and we think that'll be helpful. But we will keep an open mind on ventilation. Just know that to buy standalone ventilation units puts a tremendous load on electrical systems we have that are still, many of them still have fuses, and we do not have tremendous electrical capacity. And it moves air across the room sideways and pushes whatever COVID might be in the air around. So it's not a simple, oh, you know, it sounds good. Put an air purifier in. It's going to solid everything. It may or may not. It may create some issues as well as solve some issues. So we will keep that in mind. We will work with our engineers. We will look at whatever data and research is out there. But right now, we would not be looking to add additional ventilation unless it was for a specific purpose in a specific area where, you know, we felt it was necessary. Because we've already crossed this line, this, we've already addressed this issue of ventilation early on in this process. If we have to think about quarantines for our staff and our students, I don't have easy answers for all of this right now. If a student is quarantined, how will they continue to get their instruction? If you're trying to get back to normal instruction, and you're not streaming at the elementary level, let's say, as you are at the secondary level, when a student has to quarantine, not a whole class, maybe one or two, we have to think about how we would deal with that. We don't have that worked out yet. But we know it's something we have to work on. We know that we could need additional staffing, as I had described, whether it's additional teaching positions, whether it's additional monitor positions. We have to quantify that once we know from families which option they're going to choose. We are going to need additional equipment. We have already ordered three-sided desktop barriers. They are, there's a lead time of two or three weeks on those. We've ordered the, we've begun ordering the equipment that we know we need. So here's a rough timeline of some of our next steps. This week, we're going to be doing intensive planning and information that's already begun, and tomorrow will be a heavy day of that. Once we have that information, we'll be able to answer some of the questions that I haven't been able to answer tonight. But not all of them, but a number of them. Then we're going to probably on Friday of this week, send out a form to our families along with the information, similar to what I'm sharing tonight, but in a little more detail in writing. And with that information, asking them to take a week and make a choice. It's not a lot of time, but we need that information quickly, because without knowing our ratios and proportions, we can't move any further with certain elements of our planning. And we need to move forward. So next week, we will reconfigure our reentry task force. We will share with them progress that we made. We will get their feedback and input. We're hoping that by Friday, week to Friday, we will have our elections in by our families. And we're going to be sending out a request for testing authorization. We've already done that once, based on the fact that we thought we might be a micro cluster zone. This will be another opportunity to give authorization for us to be able to test your students as part of our surveillance testing. Next week, we'll have a series, these are tentative. These will be released once they're finalized, looking at four sessions that I'll be hosting on Zoom meetings to answer questions around the things I'm talking about tonight. Again, I won't have all of these answers and questions, but we'll be able to field a number of them. And I think the reason we're having four, four days in a row, one a day, at different times, day and night, to accommodate schedules, to give people an opportunity to talk about this, ask questions, get answers, because they're trying to make a decision about which model they're going to have to pick. So I think it makes some sense to try to get that out there. Again, more on that. We're going to begin, the following week, beginning fitting classes to the spaces based on what we learn about what people choose. We'll start planning for any classroom changes or reconfigurations. We're going to have to start, we'll continue posting and hiring and procuring people and materials as needed, and we hopefully get our testing authorization starting to come in. The fifth, the week of the fifteenth of March, we'll be able to start notifying people internally about any changes, people externally about, you know, families we're serving about any of the information that they, whether they got an election, whether, how a procedure is going to work. We can start to notify people of more of the details. We can continue procurement, and we can actually start installing any furniture and desks and things that we need to put back into classrooms. I know it was a lot, and I'm sure you still have a lot of questions. So if you do, this would be a good time to ask them.
Any questions? Go with Steve first. Run you yourself, please.
So what percentage of students do we have consent for right now for testing currently?
It's been so long since I looked at it, Steve. It's low. It was probably thirty percent, twenty-five, thirty percent.
Is there a certain percentage threshold that we have to hit to be able to truly be effective with the surveillance testing?
I'm finding a glaring lack of guidance on any of that. It just doesn't seem to exist. And what I do have, I think, I'm borrowing from the yellow, orange, red zones, and I'm using those as probably the best guidance that we have, even though it's not officially in play anymore. I've taken the yellow, the orange guidance of like an ongoing five percent a week or twenty percent a month and working with that. I think that sounds reasonable. It sounds doable. It's probably the largest percentage that we can reasonably manage. And I think it gives us enough of a sample size, and it hopefully avoids testing, like, let's just say fifty or sixty percent of our families are only willing to consent to their having their child tested. For young children, it could be a little bit, even though you're not invading far up into the nasal cavity, it could be scary, right? And so, a lot of parents are going to want to come into the building or be with their child as it's being done. You're talking about twenty a week, twenty, twenty-five students a week at an elementary that have to be done in a day, and that's going to take some time. And our nurses are already quite busy. So, you know, to do any more than that, I think would be tough. To do any less than that, I'm not so sure it's statistically significant, but I can't be sure. And I don't want certain families being like tested, you know, because they were the willing ones, right? But their child's been tested five times, you know, or three or four or five times between, say, April and June. I've had families say, look, how many times will you do this? And I think at some point, it, you know, we're just going to have to do the best we can with it. And I don't know that we'll ever know how statistically significant it is, at least not in the next three months. We just do the best we can. We're not obligated to do the surveillance testing. We're just do the surveillance testing. We're just doing it because we think it's a good idea.
Gabe Beadle?
I, I think I'm going to ask you, I think I'm going to ask a question that is on everybody's mind is, you know, I really like the plan. I think it's great. You guys put it together with a lot of thought. But my question is, you talk about a changing landscape. The landscape's going to continue to change. And just to be perfectly clear, we're talking about the landscape between now and the end of the year, that the landscape's going to continue to change. And comes June and July, you're going to have to reevaluate whatever it is then and either continue, go back, or do whatever it is going forward. We're not talking about September yet, correct?
Right. I'm anticipating and hopeful that at a minimum, we would be able to continue this practice in September. I'm actually hoping that we would be more or less back to normal by September. But we, we'll, you know, depend on variants. It'll depend on, you know, a number of things like that. Hopefully we go, hopefully the trend continues, you know, dropping cases, more vaccinations, and we're, we're, my hope is we're back to normal, but I don't want to overpromise.
Your lips to God's ears, because I'm not, I'm not saying that we should ever go back because that would be not good, okay? But let's keep it moving forward and hopefully getting better. And then if the landscape changes, we might have a completely different plan comes, comes the fall.
Absolutely. And hopefully one that we're more familiar with.
Yeah.
And then we all feel safe.
Not like the one we're in now. Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions from the board?
I just want to thank entire team. Everybody has worked incredibly hard on this all along. Just remind everybody, this is the third reinvention in a year. The third reinvention of education in a year. And it's, to Beadle's point, might not, might not be the last. So I want to thank people for their patience. I also want to thank them for their advocacy, even when they've, you know, told us things that were hard to get our heads around, or, you know, maybe not everybody agreed on. I do, I do thank everybody in this community for advocating for their children the way they think is best. And I want to thank our team for responding flexibly and being willing, that, that our teachers, our principals, our central administration, and everybody, our support staff, to work behind the scenes to make it so. They make it happen. Whenever it needs to be done, it's, okay, let's go. And I appreciate everyone because you don't always find that. You do not always find that. My sixth public school district, and I've worked in some great ones, including this one, and you don't always find it, what we have here, where people are pulling together and trying to find a way to yes, try to get to a good place for their kids, and doing it at their own sacrifice. And I appreciate all of you for doing that and want to acknowledge that. And I also want to acknowledge our families for their patience while we carefully wade through this because we, we, as, as Judah said in the opening comments, we have a responsibility to take it all in and to not move too quickly on matters of public health, which are not in our primary wheelhouse. And we take all of this very seriously. So thank you all, and we will continue to get you information, and I just appreciate your patience.
And I would, I would echo that, that sentiment. I think, you know, the saying is, change is hard. We're in such a dynamic time that, you know, dealing with this change is especially challenging, and, and I appreciate that, you know, all the people who worked so hard to come up with this plan and move us forward in this direction and realize also that life doesn't always go according to plan. So hopefully, you know, we'll hear more as, in the coming weeks and have, have exciting things to, to share about our direction and our being able to accomplish this. So thank you to everyone who worked on this as well. Okay, I am going to move the, that we go to public comment session. We have a lot of people here at the last meeting. Some of the people felt that having listened to some of the other presentations for the board that didn't necessarily relate directly to this topic, you know, they wanted to speak early. So if someone wants to second my motion that we go to a public comment session now?
I will second.
Okay, thank you. And any discussion? All in favor? Any opposed? Excellent. Okay, so we're going to go then a little differently than the actual agenda. We're going to stop here to do a public comment session. We'll start with people who are here physically. If you'd like to come to the microphone and have three minutes to comment, now's your opportunity. Please make sure you sign in. I'll remind you, I'm going to put up the, in a moment, I'm going to put up the, the timer. So, you know, I'm not going to try, I'm going to try. If you're close to three minutes, I'm not going to stop you right three minutes. The light will turn red on you. But, you know, if you go into many, many minutes on the corner, I'm going to ask you to stop. I just need him to set up.
Yeah.
Raise his hand so I can get this set up. Yeah, as a reminder, I'll ask everyone who comes to speak to keep your masks on. We'd love to see your faces, but today we're not going to. Okay, so the timer is not working. I'm going to do it from my phone. You can see it, and I apologize. Firewall issues. That sometimes happens. But it's now nine o'clock, so we're going to stop at nine thirty-five. It's at, yeah, I'll give you a hand signal. There's about ten seconds left.
Hi, my name is Michelle Prazaglia. I have two children in the district. And my grandmother used to say, it's easy to love someone when things are going good. It's more difficult to love someone when things are hard. We've all had a child year full of change and loss. We've also had a year of resilience and strength. If you have not lost someone to this virus, count your blessings. Please keep in mind that we have community members who are dealing with loss. Educators are a crucial part of Eastchester community. Teachers have reimagined education adapted to technology and found ways to connect to students while dealing with the pandemic themselves. Not one teacher wants to teach using a hybrid model. I'm a first grade teacher. Having children in my classroom is drastically easier than balancing in-person and at-home students. But we are in a global pandemic, and when called upon, the Eastchester staff developed a plan to bring children back to the building in September. This was not true for many districts in our state. Administrators and teachers are our partners in finding solutions. The CDC issued an extensive report on February 12th that was referenced here. Six feet of distance is continually referenced. Wearing face masks and using cobhorts is recommended. Our task force committee will have to figure this out. I agree that the data supports the virus is not spreading in school. A strong argument could be made it is not spreading due to six feet of distance, use of masks and cobhorts. There was a lot of public comment during the last BOE meeting, so I did further research last week. During that meeting, Eastchester was compared to other schools. I went on to the Westchester County COVID dashboard. As of last week, Rice City has seventy-one active cases of COVID, and Rice Rock Blankbrook Schools has fifty cases. Eastchester has one hundred fifty-one active COVID cases. Rice is a larger community than Eastchester. We have more than double the active COVID cases that are at. We have recent emails that reported fourteen cases in Eastchester schools. Eastchester is a district with growing enrollment. Blankbrook is a district with declining enrollment. Everyone wants to be a part of the evil experience. This also means a higher density of students in our buildings. Other schools such as Byron Hills are back to school full-time. But what does this mean? In that district, there's enough space to split one class into two classrooms. This means students spend half the day with their teacher and the other half of the day with an aide. When reviewing models, it's quality over quantity. It's difficult to compare districts because we all have our own unique issues. However, there's hope. There is a vaccine. The reality is that appointments are hard to come by and not everyone is eligible to take the vaccine. I bring these comparisons up because when our Eastchester task force makes decisions, they have to look at all the information, and I appreciate Dr. Glass that they are doing that. There is a lot of passion to get the ball rolling when it comes to getting students back to school. We need that. We're going to need funds to put these plans into effect. I urge every parent who sees returning to school full-time as a priority to advocate with PTA council when they need what Amy Pollan and Shelley Vender. Whether it's air purifiers or desk shields, we are going to need money to put the plan the task force develops into place. Funding will help transition plans into reality. We all have, we all have the same goals, teachers, parents, administrators. We want our children back to school full-time. Safety recommendations have to be taken into account. All aspects of the problem, from transportation to classroom configurations, need to be considered. Our children's, teachers' and community safety is too important not to give us the consideration it needs. Working together, we can begin to find answers. The path forward is this, is with respect, open dialogue, and thoughtful planning. We are always stronger united than we are divided. We are evil strong. Thank you.
Thank you very much. You're fine. Anyone else?
Hello. Hi there. I'm Andy Bella. I'm also the parent of two children in the school. I'm speaking to you today with two hats, so I'm going to put on my mom hat first and talk about something that isn't related to COVID, and that is that three years ago, you all created the funding and the opportunity for the Boys Varsity Swim Team. And I just wanted to thank you. The Boy Varsity Swim Team is going to be here tonight, went on to go to sectional opportunities today, and it's because of your leadership and your support of those opportunities, and the coaching, and the athletic director, both Tim Murray and Mr. Lehman, and their predecessors have all been wonderful. So we just want to say thank you. Now I'll put on my CEPTA hat. I'm an executive board member of CEPTA, and CEPTA Executive Board issued a statement that they've asked me to come here tonight to read to you. The special ed PTA wishes to acknowledge and thank the hardworking educators, many of whom are here tonight, so thank you, and the staff at Waverly, at Greenville, at Ann Hutch, at the middle school, and at the high school. We appreciate the great lengths that the educators and staff members have gone to and continue to go to in order to educate and support the students in this district. CEPTA knows how much every educator cares about our children. CEPTA strongly supports our educators and our staff members and the administrators who support them. CEPTA denounces any personal attacks against our educators and our staff members. CEPTA encourages our school community to come together in a civil, respectful, and productive dialogue around these issues, and absolutely does not endorse expressing views in a disrespectful, harassing, or threatening manner. I also have a statement from CEPTA about your board president, our board president, Rob Summer, and I'd like to read that on behalf of CEPTA. Rob Summer has devoted countless years of service to the Eastchester school community. He gives his time, his talent, and his passion to helping our children, teachers, staff, and administration. He is a staunch advocate for our school. His record of dedicated public service speaks volumes to the character and commitment to our community, and the CEPTA Executive Board provides unwavering support of Mr. Summer. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Thirty-seven seconds left to speak.
I'm good.
Anyone else? Come around to the tree, sign in. Sign where you'd like, and throw over the mic, go to the tree.
First Miranda, five Millwood Road. Thank you. I, I love the plan. Appreciate it. Appreciate your flexibility, what you do. I have more of a question than a comment. Dr. Glass, you said that you were going to be doing a phased-in approach, and then you laid out timelines across the, the month of March, where there were these certain timelines, but then you then referenced that you thought you were going to be starting with the elementary school kids. So can you clarify that timeline of March? Is that for all schools? Is it for particular schools, or is that still yet to be determined?
It's still yet to be determined, and I wanted to leave a little bit of flexibility in there. You saw with the timeline I gave, ended like the fifteenth, the week of the 15th. You know, my hesitancy about sharing a timeline is that once you do, it's hard to ever wrap that back. People wrap it in their minds. So I'm looking at that first phase being somewhere right around spring break maybe, and, and maybe a week after we come back, that's kind of where I'm headed. And then, you know, you could do other phases after that.
Okay. And then just if you could clarify why, why do you think you would want to prioritize elementary schools before the, for me in particular, middle school and potentially high school?
Yeah, that's a really big question. Simply because we, we have found that that is the area where the need is greatest, where the students have expressed, we've observed the most difficulty with the hybrid model, and we enjoy urgency there.
Okay, appreciate it. Thank you. Somebody in the chats is saying that there's a lot of echo coming forward. So you and Dr. Glass might be too close Bluetooth-wise, so...
That's why I've been muting here without speaking and unmuted. Sometimes sort of forgets
All, all I'm doing is reading something from a chat, so I just try to mess along. I appreciate that. All right. Anyone else? Anyone else from the audience who want to address the board? Excellent. All right, I will, I'll invite attendees if you want to speak on the chat. Looks like someone has their hand raised, so I'm going to allow Bobby Icavelli, and I'll let you to bring your mic just a minute later. That's right. Go ahead, Bobby. You are, you are, you have the, you have the ability to unmute. Bobby? You can unmute. All right. Another three seconds, otherwise we're done. Okay, we're going to move on. Doesn't seem to be working. Okay, you can take that. All right, we want to go right on to the budget discussion and break down the rest of the agenda. Thank you, everyone.
So I just want to...
Just unmute yourself.
Just want to invite our Assistant Superintendent for Business, Lisa Sanfilippo, to highlight for us some of the budget items. to highlight for us some of the budget items that were referenced earlier in meetings as part of our budget process. Thanks, Lisa.
Okay. Can everyone hear me? Oh, I probably have to unmute mine. Okay. Are we good? We can hear? Okay. Thank you. So tonight, we're going to start with a preliminary budget presentation. We are sort of in the middle of our budget process at this point. We have met with most of our budget builders. We still have one more to go. That's going to happen this week. We have some numbers from the governor. He has given his budget proposal. That is still subject to revision and budget gets adopted hopefully by April 1st. We have some other indicators like TRS rates and insurance rates. So, you know, so we're kind of in the process right now where we're, you know, trying to collaborate with everyone and get their requests and their needs and their wants and trying to pull that all together. So that's what we call the budget challenge, right? So our challenge is to maintain program stability and tax cap compliance while balancing the budget. Revenues have to equal expenditures. So in New York State, all schools must have a balanced budget. Deficit spending is not permitted. And the tax cap has made this challenge even greater over the years. So since the implementation of the tax cap in 2012, 2013, the budget process has become revenue-focused by necessity. Prior to the cap, districts would develop a budget based on needs and goals of the district, calculate other revenues, and then levy the difference. Now the cap restrains the district's ability to levy without going over the cap. The result is that districts must now make difficult choices based on revenue limits. So the tax cap, in a sense, restricts the growth of the tax cap, of the, I'm sorry, the school district's tax levy to lower of the CPI or 2% based on a complex formula, which we'll look through in a minute. But you can see here the history of our tax cap. And for 2021, 2022, we are projecting right now a 2.02% tax cap increase. So this is the tax cap calculation. So we'll just go through this quickly. We start with our 2021 approved actual levy, 76.3 million. We then apply tax-based growth factor. That's provided to us by the state. It comes from the assessor's office. We then back out our capital tax levy from last year, which consists of our debt service payments for capital construction and our transfer to capital line. We then apply the allowable levy growth factor, which this year is 1.23%. And since it is below 2%, that's what we are capped at. We then have to add back our 2021, 2022 proposed exemptions, which again consists of our debt service for capital construction minus any building aid, minus the use of any reserve funds, and our transfer to capital we broke out separately at 2.3 million. That brings us to a tax levy change of 2.02%. So we also have to look at our revenues, our other revenues, to come up with our budget. So in the first column, I have the actual revenues from 1920. That's where we actually landed last year, just for reference. The second column is the approved revenue budget for this year. This is the budget that was approved last June. And our estimated, I'm sorry, just got to move something here. Our estimated actual revenue for this year. So I just want to highlight some interesting items. I find them interesting anyway. So county sales tax. We, last year, if you recall, during the budget process, we took that number down to 1.3 million because we didn't know how county sales tax was going to play out. We've been finding that it's been trending where we thought it was originally going to trend, at about $400,000 a quarter. So I'm projecting for this year that we actually may hit the $1.6 million mark, which means for next year, I would budget that pretty flat. Our non-resident tuition, that's tuition the district receives for out-of-district students who participate in our special education programs. That too came in a little bit higher than was originally budgeted. But for next year, we still need to work out that number. It's still a little early for that. The other items of interest are interest earnings. We were budgeting $50,000 for that this year. That number was originally taken down. And it looks like we're probably going to come in even lower than what was budgeted, at about $20,000 this year. Other items such as rentals. Obviously, we're not renting out our building space or anything. Nobody's using our facilities, so that number's low. But hopefully for next year, that'll pick up a little bit. Refunded prior year's BOCs, that's a pretty flat number. That doesn't change too much. Miscellaneous revenue, I also believe, will be consistent. State and federal aid is down a little bit this year from what was budgeted. And the main issue there is the transportation aid. We took a reduction because the state ruled that they would not be paying aid on transportation costs. That didn't directly apply to transporting students as we did not do in the last third of last year. So there's a reduction there. But again, the legislation, there's potential legislation out there that may help us in that respect. So that could still change. The $8.4 million in state and federal aid for next year, that's a very soft number at this point. We don't know. That could fluctuate, and I'm going to go through some of that right now. So we don't usually look at the governor's proposal on a statewide basis. But in this instance, I think it was helpful to kind of see what the governor proposed for this year because it was very different than what he's done in prior years. So for the 2021 school year, his total state aid was $25.9 billion. We received, the state received federal aid under the CARES Act of $1.1 billion for a total of a little over $27 billion in school aid. So for 2021, 2022, the governor's proposing on a statewide basis, that total state aid is $26.7 billion. He's proposing a local district funding adjustment, which is a deduction of $1.3 billion. That's the first red arrow there. Also in his proposal is that that deduction is permanent. That is not something that gets restored in the subsequent year. That's a permanent change he wants to take. So that brings us down to net state aid of $24.4 billion. Federal aid, we're going to call it CARES Act II, has been allocated to New York State of $3.8 billion. He's adding that back to his numbers. He's kind of backfilling his local district funding adjustment with federal money. But that federal money is a one-time deal. That goes away. Total funding for, according to his budget, is $29.2 billion. But if you look at, if you go back up to the net state aid of $24 billion, that's actually lower than the state aid last year. So once that federal aid stops in subsequent years, we're going to actually be at a lower funding level than even last year. So this is what it looks like for Eastchester. So in the 2021 school year, which is the year we're in, that's the first column. I just want you to take a look at the line that says pandemic adjustment. I don't know if I can highlight it with my pointer. It's a negative eighty, almost $85,000. And then you can see a couple of lines down that that was the restoration. So that's what he did last year as well. The federal government allocated us money and the governor took it off of his numbers. So it was a wash. We have yet to receive that $85,000 from last year. This was allocated to us a year ago. We still haven't received it yet. The application hasn't even been approved yet. So for 2021, I mean, I'm sorry, for 2022, our local funding adjustment is $253,000. Now again, that's intended to be permanent, according to the governor. And he's backfilling it with the second red arrow there of the same amount. So again, when that number goes away in subsequent years, we're still going to be stuck with a $253,000 deduct from our state aid. Another item I wanted to point out is that that doesn't typically show up in our state aid runs is STAR. And I'm highlighting it here. So STAR has never been a part of the state aid runs before. It's part of our tax levy. And the governor's kind of putting it in here because that's what he's using to offset the local district funding adjustment. That, again, will never go away. So it's, the formula's getting clouded by his inclusion of things inconsistently from year over year. So it's just something we have to be aware of and pay attention to. So for those of you who recall, for the past several years, we've been advocating heavily for foundation aid. That problem hasn't gone away with any of this. So if you look for the 1920 school year, we were at $3.9 million. If you look for the 2021 school year, we're at $3.9 million. If you look for next year, they're proposing $3.9 million. Our second column here, the formula aid, which is the amount of aid we should be getting if they chose to fund it fully, that number just keeps growing. So for next year, it's $9.1 million. So if you go all the way across to the red arrow here, we're now only going to be 43% funded of the formula. The number gets worse. It's not getting any better. So that, you know, COVID happened. We know that that's an issue. But this problem still hasn't gone away. So when anybody's going to meet with our representatives, you know, it would be appropriate to mention foundation aid. So some other items that we're planning for the budget. Potential capital projects for next year. We are contemplating putting $2.3 million into the transfer to capital line. $300,000 would be offset by utilizing a reserve from debt service and a reserve from capital. What is planned to be done with this money is the middle school roof replacement. Some more of the middle school roof replacement, including roofs over the gymnasiums, which would include replacing the ceilings, the roof deck, lighting, ventilation, windows, and other interior renovations in those gyms. And should any funds be left over after that, other plans as identified, other projects, I'm sorry, as identified in the five-year capital plan. So this next slide just shows our enrollment projection for 2021, 2022. There's nothing really significant. We're not anticipating any major swings in any buildings. It's pretty flat and stable. So some of our key budget drivers, as I mentioned earlier, the preliminary maximum allowable tax levy increase for Eastchester is 2.02. This is subject to change until the Board of Ed adopts the budget on April 20th. New federal stimulus is likely, but the net impact is unknown until the state budget is adopted. We don't know how much is going to flow to the school districts. We don't know what manipulations the governor's office is going to make or, you know, how it's going to flow to us. So that's still out there. There is an increase in the teachers' retirement system. It goes from 9.53 to 9.8. That's a little over, that's about a 2.8% increase for the line item. And insurance premiums, health insurance premiums are increasing by 4.85% for active employees. So our budget timeline is March 1st. The property tax cap is due to New York State. April 1st, we anticipate that New York State is supposed to adopt their budget. We'll see if that happens this year. It's a difficult budget year for everyone. April 20th, the Board of Education will adopt the budget. May 4th, the budget document will be available to the public. And May 11th, there'll be the public budget hearing. The budget vote and trustee election, and I put up here, subject to change. We haven't heard anything about it being all mail-in or, you know, in other, another date. So we're assuming that this date is still good. But like I said, it could change. So that's May 18th, from 6:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., Eastchester Middle School and Garthrow Community Center for Garthrow residents only. And I think that's it. That's it.
Thank you. Very good. Thank you very much. Anything else, Dr. Glass?
I just appreciate the diligence. We're very fortunate to have Lisa, you know, back to lead. Thank you. I just want to thank Lisa because, as you can see, she actively watches all of these trends on revenue side. She has a great feel and understanding of what's happening at the state level and responds to it. And really, Dr. Glass, we're very fortunate to have her in this role and doing such a great job for us. Thank you, Lisa.
Yeah, thank you very much, Lisa. Okay. Any questions from the board? You know?
Yes, sir. Thank you. Lisa, just not to put the slides back up on the wall, but just correct me on the numbers here. The current year, we had $85,000 in federal aid for COVID. It was supposed to float down to the school. It was withheld in Albany. It's still in Albany. We might get it. We might not get it, but we don't really know. And from your slide, it looks like next year, we're talking about roughly 260, 80?
Two, yeah.
$280,000. It's already been approved by Congress. It's supposed to float its way down to our school district. And once again, we have no guarantee we're going to be getting that money either because our friend in Albany might decide to offset his problems with money that's destined for our progress. So my real question is, what the hell are our representatives doing, okay, to get us our money? Okay? We have a meeting this week with our two state representatives. We have a guy down in the Bronx who's our congressman. We need to get them on the phone and tell them that we will rally to get them unelected if they pass any more legislation with money for us that we don't get. Okay? The money was doled out by the federal government to come to the school district, not to be kept in Albany. Okay? I'm tired of this personally. I'm going to make phone calls tomorrow. But I'm asking, you know, we had 280 people on Zoom here. All of you, call your assemblywoman, call your state senator, and call your congressman and do something about this because quite frankly, I'm tired of the state keeping our money. And I apologize to everyone for losing my time. That's the way I do my time. Make those phone calls, you plats. Make the phone calls tomorrow, okay? And when we meet as a district, our representation, I offer my time to show up. I'll make the same pitch directly to their faces.
So just...
And the state aid as well. The state foundation aid as well.
The foundation aid, right.
Foundation aid you're never going to get. But let's not kid ourselves. This is real money. It was supposed to make it down to Eastchester, New York, and it's being kept in Albany. And that's unacceptable in my book. I'm sorry.
I agree.
So before the break, the business officials of Southern Westchester met with our legislators. And we did voice our concerns to them. We told them, nobody has been approved for their funding. Nobody has received their money. I think Irvington received maybe $6,000. But it's been a year. It's been a year since Congress passed this legislation, and we still haven't gotten it. And my concern is that any new funding that the federal government is going to allocate to school districts is going to get caught up in this again. And it could be years until we actually get the funding that we really need. So they are aware of it, but it certainly doesn't hurt to reinforce it with them. You know, but the business officials are also advocating for it at our level.
Lisa, I know you're doing your job. If no means meant that you weren't.
No, I know. I didn't take it that way.
But if you want someone there to get a little passionate about it, just invite me. I will make my time to show up and make my pitch.
All right. Any other comments from the board? All right. Excellent. Well then, let's move on to approvals. Dave, how do you feel about approving five, six, seven? It's up to you. You can stop at seven. You can keep going all the way to... You can keep going all the way to 10 if you.
Okay, let's see. 5, 1, 1. I move the minutes.
Unmute yourself. Unmute yourself.
Excuse me?
Turn your video off. Sorry.
Is that better?
It appears to be better, yes.
All right. I move the minutes of the February 9th board meeting and the minutes of the February 15th board meeting. I move the, I move the recommendation of the superintendent of schools. The Board of Education approves the personnel agenda as attached. I move the Board of Education hereby approves the placement as recommended by the Committee on Preschool and Special Ed for the Committee on Special Education. I move that the Board of Education hereby approves following amendment, amended designations for cell phone use in 2020, 2021 revised and for Home Depot utilization users, 2020, 2021 revised. I move that the Board accepts the Treasurer's report for January 2021. And I move the Board of Education participates in Southern Westchester BOSIs cooperative bids for 2020, 2021 school year. And this one, I really would like to move that the nomination for John V. Phil Berry, the Southern Westchester BOSIs Board of Education member. John used to be a former board member here, and I think we could support him. And that's it. That's it.
Thank you. And Cheryl, you want a second? Any discussion?
I have a second.
Thank you. Any discussion? All right. All in favor? Any opposed? All in unanimous. Excellent. It all carries. All right. Well, our future meeting dates, our next meeting will be March 9th, 2021. After that, March 23rd, 2021, and April 6th, 2021. And I'll just remind everyone that we'll have those virtual sessions in the first week or so of March that I'm sure you'll send an email, Dr. Glass. And I hope everyone will participate in those as well. We really want to hear from you. Since we did comments from the public already, we'll skip right to comments from the board. Any comments from the board? All right, Cheryl?
As we all know, we're nearing the one-year mark of the disruption that COVID has wrought in our lives.
Cheryl, I'm not hearing you.
You're not hearing?
Yeah. You're still muted.
I'm still, no, I'm not muted. Are you hearing me now? Are you hearing me now?
Now, I hear you. Yes. That's it. Thank you.
So as we reach the one-year mark of the disruption that COVID has wrought in our lives, I want to acknowledge our community members who have suffered losses this year. Students in our district have lost grandparents and parents, which is heartbreaking. Many others in our school community have lost friends and loved ones. Many, as we all know, didn't have the opportunity to be with their loved ones or properly greet for them. So I just wanted to request that on our next meeting, our March 9th meeting, which is close to the one-year mark of when things really started to unfold in New York, that we have a moment of silence in honor of any school community members who have lost loved ones to COVID. I just also want to acknowledge the teachers and all the staff and the administration for their commitment in working toward an agreement around a plan to increase in-person education for the families that wanted as much as possible. I want to thank the teachers for their care and dedication to our students and their families throughout the pandemic. I really value the collaborative work that has gone on between the Eastchester Teachers Association and the administration. I think it makes for the healthiest learning environment for all of our students. I think ultimately, it's goodwill and cooperation that made the democratic space in public schooling work better. Makes for happier and more effective learning spaces for our children. And I believe strongly we have to protect this democratic space through civil disagreement, empathy for others, and openness. And I appreciate the work that everyone's done to get us to this point. And I'm optimistic moving forward. Thank you.
Thank you, Cheryl. Any other comments from the board?
Dave? I just want to echo what Vito said. I'm, this governor has been, his attitude towards public education in New York has been borderline disgusting. I mean, I'm not trying to outblunt you, Vito. But this is a blatant attack on children. I mean, he's really gonna destroy our budget, strong vote. We get a one-year federal subsidy, and he's gonna take away continual state subsidy. This is just a real horrible attack on public education. He's coming after your children. So I hope people get active and speak to Amy Paul and speak to Shelley Meyer and whoever else. You need to.
I agree. Thank you, Dave.
Dave, the actual word is theft. The money has been designated to school districts, and the state is stealing it from the school districts. Let's call it what it is. So everybody should be as upset about this as I am.
Anybody else? Thank you, Vito. Anybody else? Anybody can't open? Let it turn.
I just wanted to take a moment to thank the educators, administration, the families. I'm glad that we're coming together, and there's a new plan that's coming into place. But I also, you know, I really wanted to specifically say thank you so much, in particular, to the classroom teachers who are working so hard every day to get our children through this. And I see Mr. Rich in the crowd. Thank you so much. My son has you as a, as a teacher, and I can't tell you all the great things that you're doing for Greenville. And I just wanted to say thank you. I know Mr. O'Neill's here, too. And thank you to all the teachers and the families that have come tonight. And I think that we can make a difference if we work together, and good things can really happen for all of our children. So thank you.
I can only echo the same sentiments. Anyone else? Comments from the board? All right. Well, thank you, everyone, for joining us tonight. And I will entertain a motion to move it to executive session. It's the personnel issue. Or personnel issue. All right. Steve and Vito, you second? All in favor? Any discussion? All in favor? All right. Moving into executive session. Have a good night, everyone. Thanks for coming.